I want to meet the Financing Authority.
That's in the beginning.
Never met him before.
Not finding it for some reason.
Very, very front.
When was I elected? How much do I get? I mean, I never knew this. It was a part of me I didn't know about and I get no pay.
All right. Let me welcome you to the Tuesday, April 14, 2009 meeting, a joint meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Financing Authority. Mr. Kosakian, could you call the roll for the council, please?
Council members Najarian.
Here.
Montero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Yusefian.
Here.
Mayor Draymond.
Here. And this is a good question.
Who's the chair of the Financing Authority?
See Mr. Grant coming forward.
We're trying to figure out who the chair is.
He must be the chair.
As the matter of the chair of the Financing Authority.
Yes.
How about that?
Congratulations.
You didn't even know.
And this is the first time I've been able to take this costume out and wear it, and it's on my last day. So I'm very lucky. Well, it doesn't come with a dashing hat or anything, does it? All right. Every seven years. So it's like cicadas, what you're saying? It's like locusts. It's here every once every seven years. Okay. All right. Do we need a roll call for the -- okay, I guess we do. Mr. Kosakian, could we call roll for the Financing Authority?
Authority members Najarian.
Here.
Montero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Yusefian.
Here.
Mayor Draymond.
Here. All right. Very good. Could we hear the report, please, Mr. Kosakian?
The agenda for the April 14, 2009 joint meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Financing Authority was posted on Thursday, April 9, 2009, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. And could we hear the item at 1A?
1A, at 1 is City Treasurer regarding request authorization to open an account with the Local Agency Investment Fund, LEAF. At 1A is a resolution authorizing deposit and withdrawal of the Glendale Financing Authority's monies in the Local Agency Investment Fund and the State Treasury in accordance with the provisions of Section 16429.1 of the Government Code for the Purpose of Investment stated therein and verification by the State Treasurer's Office of all banking information provided in that regard.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kosakian. Let us go to our City Treasurer, Mr. Baruchy.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Councilmen, as well as Glendale Finance Authority Chairman and Board Members. The City Treasurer's Office recommends that the Glendale Financing Authority approve the resolution to open an account in the Local Agency Investment Fund, the state pool. The specific purpose would be to generate additional income for the city. The Local Agency Investment Fund acts very similarly as a money market fund. And as such, the city currently uses the Local Agency Investment Fund as well as money market funds. For the last several months, ever since we've had this economic crisis hit the nation and rates have collapsed and we've got a compression of rates in the marketplace, the Local Agency Investment Fund has done considerably better than the money market funds, to the degree that it is worth considering opening up another account in LEAF and take advantage of that interest rate advantage. For example, at the time this report was written, the Local Agency Investment Fund was yielding 1.85%, while money market funds were averaging 45 basis points. That's less than one-half of 1%. That's a differential of 1.4%, almost 1.5%. That's huge in a compressed marketplace. If we had moved, or if we had $40 million and moved it from our money market fund and put it into LEAF to take advantage of that differential, it would be worth approximately $45,000, $46,000 a month. Or on an annual basis, that'd be about $560,000. Going forward, we're looking that that differential probably will level out on the low side at about 1% to as high as maybe 1.25%. On $40 million being moved from money market funds into the Local Agency Investment Fund, that's additional earnings of anywhere between $400,000 to $500,000. So with that, in summary, the City Treasurer's Office recommends that the Glendale Financing Authority approve the resolution to open an account with the Local Agency Investment Fund managed by the State Treasurer's Office.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Baruchy. Do I have any -- I have no speaker cards, by the way, so let me see if I have any comments from my council colleague, or I should say council colleagues and Finance Authority colleagues. Mr. Weaver.
As a Finance Authority member, I'd like to move 1A.
All right.
Second.
We have motion second. Is there any other discussion? I have some questions. Mr. Najarian.
Mr. Baruchy, tell us, first off, how is it that LEAF is obtaining such a higher yield compared to money market funds?
Structural differences. I think I mentioned in my remarks that LEAF, the Local Agency Investment Fund, is considered similarly to money market funds. It is not structured differently. It enjoys the same convenience as easy in and easy out. In other words, if we have money in the money market fund as well as in LEAF, we can get our money back within one day. The real differential is, on money market funds, they're registered with the Securities Exchange Commission, and money market funds are regulated to have a life of no more than -- not a life. They can't have an investment in their fund longer than 13 months. There isn't that restriction with the Local Agency Investment Fund. That makes a big difference. Usually, money market funds also are prescribed as to what -- and it's usually identified as to what they will make investments in. Usually treasuries, repurchase agreements of treasuries, or treasuries and agencies. Very rarely do you have a mix with something other than that. Local Agency Investment Fund being part of the state pool, actually part of the state pooled money investment board, actually has the ability to invest in other instruments other than just treasuries or repurchase agreements or just federal agencies. Corporates come to mind.
So how about the risk factor?
I don't see the amount of corporates, if that's where you're pointing to or directing your comments as far as risk, is kind of, is, in my opinion, minuscule. I listened to the State Treasurer give his annual report last October as the implosion was occurring and came back very comfortable with their operation.
Several months back, some of the state pooled funds, and I forget which one, ran into trouble. They became illiquid, I think. You can probably correct me on that. Do we have any of those type of risks with these investments?
Not that I'm aware of.
And who oversees this, this LEAF? I mean, I don't want to find out that there's a Bernie Madoff at the top who's taken municipalities for a ride. Is there some sort of oversight?
Yes. Well, let's see. The Local Agency Investment Fund has oversight by the Local Agency Investment Advisory Board. The Local Agency Investment Fund, I think I mentioned to you, has a pot of money within the pooled money investment board funds program itself. And that is, let's see if I can't give you an idea as to what the composition of that is. The total there is approximately $65 billion. It's managed by the State Treasurer's Office. Their investment people. It's comprised of basically three funds. The Local Agency Investment Fund, which represents, right now, about $21 billion of that $60 to $65 billion. They've got special funds and the state's general fund. So it's parceled out that way. Basically, what would that represent? About a third, 33% to 35% of the total. I don't know about the losses that you are referencing in some of the pools. I'm not familiar with that. At least, I know it does not apply to anything that's impacting the pooled money investment board or the local agency investment board. As far as oversight goes, there is also oversight on the pooled money investment board itself. And that board is comprised of the chairman, which would be the State Treasurer. Then you have the state controller, and you've got the Director of Finance.
Is there any possibility that through act of the Assembly or the Senate, that the revenue from these LEAF proceeds, from these LEAF investments could be obtained, borrowed, triple-flipped, or in any other manner removed from our immediate control? Is it subject to -- does the legislature have any authority over payment of these funds? We're talking $40 million that we're going to put in.
Up to $40,000.
Up to $40 million, I presume, will get close to that.
We would hope to. We would hope to, sure.
I just don't want Sacramento. As Sacramento's budget melts down perhaps further, I want to make sure that this money is safe and not just the principal, but also the interest that we're getting and that won't be at risk by the Assembly.
Well, trust me, Mr. Najarian. I'm also very concerned, not only with the interest, but also getting our principal back. There are two items that are particularly concerned to me and when I consider risk. And that would be, can the state go bankrupt? And according to, it's been determined that the state of California cannot declare bankruptcy under the federal regulations. So therefore, in the Government Code section, and I can read the code section to you, but let's just skip over that for the time being. The section states that the government code shall not be subject to either impoundment or seizure by any state official or state office, nor is it, our deposits in the Local Agency Investment Fund can be transferred or loaned out. And secondarily, another concern of municipal treasurers, Baruchy included, is that what happens if the state fails to pass a budget by whatever time? Can a state official or can a state agency come in? And the government code addresses that also. That ruling was made. So that the right of a city to withdraw its deposited money from the Local Agency Investment Fund upon demand may not be altered, impaired, or denied based upon the state's failure to adopt a state budget by the budget deadline date each year. So on those levels, I'm very comfortable that the money that we put in there, we will get back. You might ask, how long has LEAF, the Local Agency Investment Fund, been around? Is it something?
Don't prompt the witness, please.
I'm sorry.
Mr. City Manager.
Well, I was going to add, LEAF has been around a long time through a number of crises by the state, including those back in the '90s where they first began taking local money. And in all of those instances, LEAF has never been a target for the state in the worst of times.
Based on those representations, I feel confident to move in this direction.
Okay. Mr. Yusefian, anything? All right. Anything else? Do we have a -- well, we have a motion in second already? All right. Let us call the roll for -- now, can we call the roll for both the council and the --
Actually, this is just the Financing Authority resolution.
Okay. All right. Yes, it even says that. All right. Very good. Mr. Kosakian, could you call the roll for the Financing Authority, please?
Authority members Najarian.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Yusefian.
Hi.
Mayor Draymond.
Yes. And I hope that all of us, when we meet next time, will refrain from becoming illiquid ourselves.
Move to adjourn for the Financing Authority.
Second.
We are adjourned.
Move to adjourn for council.
Second.
Council is adjourned. Thank you all.
The look of love is in your eyes. A look your smile can't disguise. The look of love is saying so much more than just words could ever say. And what my heart has heard, well it takes my breath away. I can hardly wait to hold you, feel my arms around you. How long I have waited, waited just to love you. Now that I have found you. You've got the look of love is on your face. A look that time can't erase. Be mine tonight. Let this be just the start of so many nights like this. Let's take the lovers round and then see that ceiling. Soon I will kiss, I can hardly wait to hold you. Feel my arms around you. How long I have waited, waited just to love you. Now that I have found you. Don't ever go, no, no. Don't ever go. I love you so. Mmm. I love you so. I can hardly wait to hold you, feel my arms around you. How long I have waited, waited just to love you. Now that I have found you. Don't ever go, no, no. Don't ever go. I love you so. Mmm. I love you so. I can hardly wait to hold you, feel my arms around you. How long I have waited, waited just to love you. Now that I have found you. Don't ever go, no, no. Don't ever go. I love you so. Mmm. I love you so. I can hardly wait to hold you, feel my arms around you. How long I have waited, waited just to love you. Now that I have found you. Don't ever go, no, no. Don't ever go. I love you so. Mmm. I love you so. I can hardly wait to hold you, feel my arms around you. How long I have waited, waited just to love you. Now that I have found you. Don't ever go, no, no. Don't ever go. I love you so. Mmm. I love you so. I can hardly wait to hold you, feel my arms around you. How long I have waited, waited just to love you. Now that I have found you. Don't ever go, no, no. Don't ever go. I love you so. Mmm. I love you so. I can hardly wait to hold you, feel my arms around you. How long I have waited, waited just to love you. Now that I have found you. Don't ever go, no, no. Don't ever go. I love you so. Mmm. I love you so. I can hardly wait to hold you, feel my arms around you. How long I have waited, waited just to love you. Now that I have found you. Don't ever go, no, no. Don't ever go. I love you so. Mmm. I love you so. I can hardly wait to hold you, feel my arms around you. How long I have waited, waited just to love you. Now that I have found you. Don't ever go, no, no. Don't ever go. I love you so. Mmm. I love you so. I can hardly wait to hold you, feel my arms around you. How long I have waited, waited just to love you. Now that I have found you. Don't ever go, no, no. Don't ever go. I love you so. Mmm. I love you so. I can hardly wait to hold you, feel my arms around you. How long I have waited, waited just to love you. Now that I have found you. Don't ever go, no, no. Don't ever go. I love you so. Mmm. I love you so. I can hardly wait to hold you, feel my arms around you. How long I have waited, waited just to love you. Now that I have found you. Don't ever go, no, no. Don't ever go. I love you so. Mmm. I love you so. I can hardly wait to hold you, feel my arms around you. How long I have waited, waited just to love you. Now that I have found you. Don't ever go, no, no. Don't ever go. I love you so. Mmm. I love you so. I can hardly wait to hold you, feel my arms around you. How long I have waited, waited just to love you. Now that I have found you. Don't ever go, no, no. Don't ever go. I love you so. Mmm. I love you so. I can hardly wait to hold you, feel my arms around you. How long I have waited, waited just to love you. Now that I have found you. Don't ever go, no, no. Don't ever go. I love you so. Mmm. I love you so. I can hardly wait to hold you, feel my arms around you. How long I have waited, waited just to love you. Now that I have found you. Don't ever go, no, no. Don't ever go. I love you so. Mmm. I love you so. I can hardly wait to hold you, feel my arms around you. How long I have waited, waited just to love you. Now that I have found you. Don't ever go, no, no. Don't ever go. I love you so. Mmm. I love you so. I can hardly wait to hold you, feel my arms around you. How long I have waited, waited just to love you. Now that I have found you. Don't ever go, no, no. Don't ever go. I love you so. Mmm. I love you so. I can hardly wait to hold you, feel my arms around you. How long I have waited, waited just to love you. Now that I have found you. Don't ever go, no, no. Don't ever go. I love you so. Mmm. I love you so. I can hardly wait to hold you, feel my arms around you. How long I have waited, waited just to love you. Now that I have found you. Don't ever go, no, no. Don't ever go. I love you so. Mmm. I love you so. I can hardly wait to hold you, feel my arms around you. How long I have waited, waited just to love you. Now that I have found you. Don't ever go, no, no. Don't ever go. I love you so. Mmm. I love you so. I can hardly wait to hold you, feel my arms around you. How long I have waited, waited just to love you. Now that I have found you. Don't ever go, no, no. Don't ever go. I love you so. Mmm. I love you so. I can hardly wait to hold you, feel my arms around you. How long I have waited, waited just to love you. Now that I have found you. Don't ever go, no, no. Don't ever go. I love you so. Mmm. I love you so. I can hardly wait to hold you, feel my arms around you. How long I have waited, waited just to love you. Now that I have found you. Don't ever go, no, no. Don't ever go. I love you so. Mmm. I love you so. I can hardly wait to hold you, feel my arms around you. How long I have waited, waited just to love you. Now that I have found you. Don't ever go, no, no. Don't ever go. I love you so. Mmm. I love you so. I can hardly wait to hold you, feel my arms around you. How long I have waited, waited just to love you. Now that I have found you. Don't ever go, no, no. Don't ever go. I love you so. Mmm. I love you so. I can hardly wait to hold you, feel my arms around you. How long I have waited, waited just to love you. Now that I have found you. Don't ever go, no, no. Don't ever go. I love you so. Mmm. I love you so. I can hardly wait to hold you, feel my arms around you. How long I have waited, waited just to love you. Now that I have found you. Don't ever go, no, no. Don't ever go. I love you so. Mmm. I love you so. I can hardly wait to hold you, feel my arms around you. How long I have waited, waited just to love you. Now that I have found you. Don't ever go, no, no. Don't ever go. I love you so. Mmm. I love you so. I can hardly wait to hold you, feel my arms around you. How long I have waited, waited just to love you. Now that I have found you. Don't ever go, no, no. Don't ever go. I love you so. Mmm. I love you so. I can hardly wait to hold you, feel my arms around you. How long I have waited, waited just to love you. Now that I have found you. Don't ever go, no, no. Don't ever go. I love you so. Mmm. I love you so. I can hardly wait to hold you, feel my arms around you. How long I have waited, waited just to love you. Now that I have found you. Don't ever go, no, no. Don't ever go. I love you so. Mmm. I love you so. I can hardly wait to hold you, feel my arms around you. How long I have waited, waited just to love you. Now that I have found you. Don't ever go, no, no. Don't ever go. I love you so. Mmm. I love you so. I can hardly wait to hold you, feel my arms around you. How long I have waited, waited just to love you. Now that I have found you. Don't ever go, no, no. Don't ever go. I love you so. Mmm. I love you so. I can hardly wait to hold you, feel my arms around you. How long I have waited, waited just to love you. Now that I have found you. Don't ever go, no, no. Don't ever go. I love you so. Mmm. I love you so. I can hardly wait to hold you, feel my arms around you. How long I have waited, waited just to love you. Now that I have found you. Don't ever go, no, no. Don't ever go. I love you so. Mmm. I love you so. I can hardly wait to hold you, feel my arms around you. How long I have waited, waited just to love you. Now that I have found you. Don't ever go, no, no. Don't ever go. I love you so. Mmm. I love you so. I can hardly wait to hold you, feel my arms around you. How long I have waited, waited just to love you. Now that I have found you. Don't ever go, no, no. Don't ever go. I love you so. Mmm. I love you so. I can hardly wait to hold you, feel my arms around you. How long I have waited, waited just to love you. Now that I have found you. Don't ever go, no, no. Don't ever go. I love you so. Mmm. I love you so. I can hardly wait to hold you, feel my arms around you. How long I have waited, waited just to love you. Now that I have found you. Don't ever go, no, no. Don't ever go. I love you so. Mmm. I love you so. I can hardly wait to hold you, feel my arms around you. How long I have waited, waited just to love you. Now that I have found you. Don't ever go, no, no. Don't ever go. I love you so. Mmm. I love you so. I can hardly wait to hold you, feel my arms around you. How long I have waited, waited just to love you. Now that I have found you. Don't ever go, no, no. Don't ever go. I love you so. Mmm. I love you so. I can hardly wait to hold you, feel my arms around you. How long I have waited, waited just to love you. Now that I have found you.